Hey folks, we're gonna get started. Okay, we could start at nine fifty seven. Oh, yeah, we're good. Okay, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, I'm Eric Costello, councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee, to my left, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, Member of the Committee, Councilman Isaac Getze Schleifer, 5th District, Member of the Committee, Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District, Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District, to my far right, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, Member of the Committee, to my immediate right, Tony Leva, Staff to the Committee, joined by members of the Mayor's Office and the Council President's Office. First up, Council Bill 24-0516, zoning, zoning conditional use, parking lot, principal use, 1211 Jefferson Street. Law Department, approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DHCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD, we stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. BMZA, defers to planning? Okay. BDC, favorable? Okay. Parking Authority of Baltimore City, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Department of Transportation?
No objection. Thank you.
Thank you. Fire Department, not opposed? Okay. Planning Commission, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Anything you want to add?
Not in particular. It's a typical conditional use parking lot. It's part of the master plan. It's fine.
Good to go. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter? Seeing that there are none, colleagues, is there a motion to move this bill favorably? Motion by Middleton, second by Stokes. Costello is a yes. Middleton? Stokes? Schleifer? Burnett? Two absences. This bill moves to second reader with a vote of five zero at the next full meeting of the City Council. Next up, Council Bill 24-0533, zoning conditional use, conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to four-dwelling units in the RE zoning District, variances 15 North Stricker Street. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DHCD?
Jason Wright, representing DHCD, we stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. BMZA? Nothing. BDC?
Tom Welly, on behalf of BDC, we stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. Parking Authority of Baltimore City, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Department of Transportation?
No objection.
Fire Department, not present. Planning Commission, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Seeing that there are none, colleagues, is there a motion to move this bill favorably? Motion by Stokes, second by Middleton. Costello, yes. Middleton? Stokes? Schleifer? Burnett? McCray and Dorsey absent. This bill passes five zero with two absences, moves to the next full meeting of the City Council. Next up, Council Bill 24-0573, repeal of ordinance 04-824, planned unit development, 1901 Light Street, 1921 Light Street, Bed of Johnson Street, and Block 1947, Lot 1. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DHCD, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. BDC, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Planning Commission, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Department of Transportation, no objections?
No objection.
Thank you. Colleagues, are there any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, I know we have one member of the public who wishes to testify on this matter, Mr. Woolman, representing the applicant?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Real quickly, this matter was heard once previously back in September. There was a posting error. This was a companion builder rezoning bill. We only posted a sign on the property for the rezoning bill, didn't post the sign for the PUD repeal. So we've already had a hearing on this bill. I did submit written findings of fact and memorandum to the committee. I also emailed that over to Mr. Tizzo this morning. But basically, this is a quote-unquote do-over because only one sign was posted and not two. So that's why we're back here today.
Thank you, Mr. Woolman. And Mr. DePietro, the council will consider the findings of fact on second reader. That's good?
Yes, sir.
Outstanding. Thank you, Mr. Woolman. Colleagues, any questions for Mr. Woolman? Seeing that there are none, are there any other members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Seeing that there are none, colleagues, is there a motion to move the bill favorably? I'll make the motion. Is there a second? Second by Council Vice President Middleton. Costello is a yes. Middleton? Stokes? Schleifer? Burnett? Dorsey and McCray are absent. This bill passes five zero with two absences and moves to second reader at the next full meeting of the City Council. Next up, Council Bill 24-0586, urban renewal, Old Town Mall, Amendment 11. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency? Thank you. DHCD?
Jason Wright, representing DHCD, we stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. BMZA, none as of this writing. BDC?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. BDC stands by our favorable report.
Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
Zachary Roman, Office of Equity and Civil Rights, we stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. Parking Authority of Baltimore City?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority, we stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Department of Public Works?
Alejandra Ivanovich, representing the Department of Public Works, we stand by your report.
Thank you. Baltimore City Recreation and Parks?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Baltimore City Recreation and Parks stands by their report.
Which is?
We defer to planning.
Excellent. Thank you. Planning Commission, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation?
They should also be favorable.
Excellent. Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Seeing that there are none, colleagues, is there a motion to move this bill favorably? Motion by Stokes, second by Middleton. Costello is a yes. Middleton? Stokes? Schleifer? Burnett? This bill passes five zero with two absences, Dorsey and McCray, moves to second reader at the next full meeting of the City Council. Next up, 24-0591, rezoning, 121 Riverside Road. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Two times is better than one. DHCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, once again, representing DHCD, we respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Planning Commission, favorable?
Favorable.
Thank you. Fire Department, absent. Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
So the Office of Equity and Civil Rights has discerned potential in equity in the bill's impact by changing the property zoning from residential to a mixed-use industrial zoning. Because of that, and because of the statement of intent submitted by the applicant not disclosing what the use of the property will be, we cannot interpret any proposed like equity impacts. So because of that, we request a favorable, unfavorable committee report. Thank you.
Ms. Tilden? Can you come on up for a second or testify? Can you tell me what your applicant's proposed use is for this property?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. So as background, the applicant has owned the property since, I believe, 1964. It was operated as a wire fabrication factory until it closed in 2020, at which point he sought to sell the property. He learned that it was downzoned from heavy industrial to R6 mid-density residential. He's been trying to sell the property ever since. That is why there is no proposed use. He has had multiple contracts fall through because the property is zoned industrial next to a bunch of other industrial uses. And at this point, he has entered into a letter of intent with a company that has, would like to use the property as a storage facility for their furniture warehouse. And this would not be something that was commercial storage. It's a furniture staging company. So it would be minimal traffic in and out. It would just be for one organization. But of course, they can't move forward with actually executing a contract unless this property is downzoned or upzoned back to IMU 1.
I appreciate that additional information and clarification. The OECR, though, would like to stand behind its bill reports submitted to the council.
So you want to oppose?
Yes. Yes.
Tell me how that's an equity issue. Walk me through that because you just heard from the applicant, the intent for the rezoning.
Right, but, okay, so from what we gathered when creating our report is that there was no tentative contract. There is an intent to sell, but the zoning changes do open up the doorway for uses that could pose negative equity impacts. Those include, sorry.
But it's, she, the property, the zoning classification that she's trying to move it to, that's what the property's current use is, right?
So the property is currently actually vacant because the prior use had stopped and it was non-conforming. So the property cannot be put back into any use until it is rezoned. And we're not proposing to rezone it to heavy commercial. We're proposing to rezone it to IMU 1, which is a designation specifically designed for industrial mixed-use buildings. So that is transitioning buildings that were historically used for industrial purposes into areas that are mixed use. So it's designed to transition from industrial into residential. I'll also note that this is right next to two other properties that were downzoned, were formerly heavy industrial, and are now R6 and are operating as non-conforming heavy industrial uses.
That makes all the sense in the world to me. Councilman Schleifer?
Yeah, no, it makes sense to me also. I think that if anything, it's an equity issue, the fact that it's sitting there vacant, and we obviously don't want that. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
So one last time, do you want to change the position, Mr. Schnell?
No. So from what our perspective was, that the owner of the property intends to, after changing the zoning, demolish the property, the vacant property, and build a new one on the property. From our perspective, that can be done within the current zoning of property, the R6 residential zoning, to be used to create residential property rather than reestablishing a new warehouse or industrial facility to be zoned in IMU 1. If the property is going to be destroyed regardless because it is vacant for its new use, then...
Mr. Chair, may I just respond?
We're, look, we're gonna pass this bill today. I just, I just want to highlight that we have a city office that all of our other city agencies are supporting a bill. And this, I'm good, Ms. Tilden.
Thanks so much.
Excellent as always. Thank you for very clearly articulating what's going on here. I just, I'm confused as to why this office is weighing in on a land use matter and how this is somehow an equity issue when, if the applicant doesn't take action, the property remains vacant, is not on the tax rolls, and that's an equity issue. That's an equity issue, not just for the community, but for the entire city as a whole. Mr. Schnell?
Yeah, and Councilman, I'll just jump in here on the, at the top of your remarks, I think the office being on a land use matter is not inappropriate. Right there are equity concerns around how we do land use. One of the key drivers of negative impacts on certain communities over others. So I disagree with that part of it. To the other, to your other point, I do agree, and it will be addressed, that this report was submitted today, on the day of the hearing. The administration is dealing with that, and please accept my apologies.
I certainly appreciate that, Mr. Schnell. I'm gonna turn to Councilman Schleifer for one last remark. I have one brief question for law after Councilman Schleifer, and then we'll move on.
Yeah, all right. One last thing I would say. I mean, you should look at this as a positive. I mean, I don't know what the end result will end up being, but if they do intend to demolish this property and rebuild it, from where I stand and the members of the council here, every year we come up to the budget, budget season, and we hear how we don't have enough money to fund all the necessary things that we want to do across the city. And so if somebody wants to knock down a vacant property and rebuild something that's going to increase its value and add to our tax base, that sounds like something that's really great for the entire city. So I really am mind-boggled that any agency would be fighting that.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. DePietro, is there anything in city code around land use, which is authority, which is granted to the city of Baltimore from the state of Maryland, which has anything to do with whether or not it's an equity issue beyond whether or not this meets the two simple criteria in the law of either a mistake or a change in character of the neighborhood? Is there something I'm missing here?
My colleagues over here can chime in if they want, but I don't believe there's any requirements that would affect the zoning process.
Excellent. That's all I needed to hear. Thank you. All right. So, next up, Baltimore Development Corporation.
Tom Welly, Baltimore Development Corporation, we stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. Transportation?
We have no objection.
Thank you. BMZA? Mr. Schnell, BMZA?
They stand by the report and take no position.
Thank you. Parking Authority of Baltimore City?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority, we stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? With the record note that Ms. Tilden testified on behalf of the applicant, seeing that there are none, colleagues, is there a motion to move this bill favorably? Motion by Schleifer, second by Stokes. Costello is a yes. Middleton? Stokes? Schleifer? Burnett? Dorsey and McCray are absent. This bill passes five zero with two absences and moves to the second reader at the next full meeting of the City Council. Okay. Next up, Council Bill 24-0588, area of special signage control designation, stadium area. Before we begin, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Tizzo for a moment. Is there, is there any specific logical order that Department of Planning would prefer that these three bills, related bills are heard in?
I don't think so, but I'm gonna look over my shoulder at Caitlin Odette, who staffed these three.
I'll defer to you, Ms. Odette. Any specific order?
No.
Okay. All right. So we'll stick with that one. 24-0588, area of special signage control designation, stadium area. Let me just go to law, Ms. DePietro or Ms. Rully. Do you have any specific order you want to hear these three in?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. Law Department, approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
DHCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD, we respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Planning Commission, favorable? Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
No objection.
Thank you. BDC?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom Welly from BDC, we stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. Transportation?
No objection.
BMZA? Mr. Schnell?
Stands behind their bill report.
Favorable?
I don't think they took a position on this. They never take position.
Okay. Fire? That one's you, Mr. Schnell.
Fire Department stands behind their bill report, Mr. Chair.
Favorable?
Yes.
Parking Authority of Baltimore City?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority, we stand by our favorable bill report.
Okay. Excellent. Colleagues, any questions? Actually, we're gonna hold questions. Mr. Boston, I'm gonna have you come up and walk us through this on behalf of the applicant here, if you don't mind, if you want to come on up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the...
Red button, bottom right. Not often that we get new stuff in here.
Yeah, I see. I see. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Committee, Frank Boston here on behalf of the Baltimore Ravens. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. If you want, in interest of time, I can testify on this bill. We'll see my comments after all three. It's up to you. It applies to all three.
Yeah, why don't, why don't you go through your comments now, just so we have that context, and that'll help move things along.
Myself and Ari Plout are the lawyers representing the Ravens. Brandon Etheridge is General Counsel, Senior Vice President, is also here today on behalf of all three bills. And we ask that you support all three. Thank you, Councilwoman Porter, for introducing these bills. Thank you, Chairman Costello, and the committee members for hearing them. Mr. Leva, thank you for the coffees. The three bills collectively will allow for our desire to erect a digital billboard on Lot N, adjacent to the elevated Russell Street. The billboards, the billboards will not face the community and instead face the Russell Street north and southbound traffic. The billboards will continue to improve the experience at M&amp;T Bank Stadium, will benefit the city financially through taxes and PSAs, public service announcements. The bills, the billboard will also allow the neighboring communities to promote activities or citywide initiatives. It is, it is important for you to know that we met with the community, the associations that Councilwoman Porter identified for us, were the Carroll Camden Business Association, the Pig Town Community Association. We met with them twice, had many fruitful conversations and exchanges of emails, and we have the support of both communities, associations, along with the support of Pig Town Main Street Association. Also, you should know that we've had many conversations with the representatives from the George Washington Elementary School, and discovered that there was already an existing strong partnership between the Ravens and that school and other schools in the community. So this was an opportunity to bring that to the forefront and continue that existing relationship. We also have a letter, because we know it's important to a lot of members of the council, from All Pro Vending. And you should have a copy of the letter that I think was circulated. And All Pro Vending is a minority subcontractor that has had a longstanding relationship since they've, actually before they came to the new stadium here downtown on Russell Street. And, and the letter will tell you that it was founded for the purposes of serving the stadium, and they have been a, the Ravens have been a great partner for these minority contractors here in the city of Baltimore. There is an amendment that is worthy of discussion. And the amendment that we have proposed is here to address some of the concerns of the council members and Planning Commission. Basically, the amendment says that the billboard, well, it says exactly, that the billboard will only, this type of pole in height will only be allowed in parking lots, in a parking lot, not less than 2,000 feet from a stadium with a seating capacity of at least 40,000 people. The purpose of, and that amendment was put in to try to address some of the concerns of members of the council, as well as, you know, the Planning Commission and the department. The idea being is you didn't want to set a precedent in the C5 DC District that, you know, would allow these type of poles to be erected. The only reason that the pole is of this height is because Russell Street is elevated, and it's the only way that you're gonna be seen. It can be seen from the elevated Russell Street. This way, it narrows the scope, and it wouldn't just apply to the Ravens Stadium. It would apply to any stadium which, of 40,000 or more, which hence would also apply to Orioles at Camden Yards, the Oriole Park at Camden Yards. So, you know, we have the amendment. If the council wants to consider it, we have submitted the amendment as an amendment to City Council Bill 24-590. And with that, I'm standing for any questions. We ask that you approve all three bills collectively because all three bills were needed in order for us to get this billboard up on Lot N.
Thank you, Mr. Boston. As always, I appreciate the due diligence that you and Mr. Plout do with your clients and the community. It's much appreciated. It makes our job a lot easier. Obviously, it goes without saying how tremendous of a partner the Baltimore Ravens is to our community. And I want to thank you for your diligent work with Law Department and other city partners at the request of the Council President and me to address that amendment, which the committee will view as a favorable amendment. So certainly appreciate that. Colleagues, any questions for Mr. Boston? Seeing that there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today?
And I forgot to introduce my latest partner, Mark Fine-Rolf, who's here learning the city process. We have with us Brandon Etheridge, who's the Senior VP and General Counsel. I believe he wants to address the body.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Mr. Chairman, thanks for having me today. Members of the committee as well, thank you. Really, our primary interest in this billboard, you know, back in 2023, we extended our lease and renewed our commitment to the city of Baltimore until at least 2038. Our lease includes two five-year options on the back end that could see the Ravens staying here until 2048. One of the conversations that we had with the Maryland Stadium Authority through that process was on how do we activate the stadium, bring more fans, bring more tourists, bring more guests into the city on a day-to-day basis. So one of the primary things that we talked about was activating the stadium weekly, daily, and those sorts of things. So one of the things that we're doing, we're talking to with MSA quite a bit right now, is on hosting more events at the stadium. As we do that, we wanted a means to really reach a broader audience, a larger audience than what social media allows, and tap into the commuters, tap into the tourists that are traveling to and through Baltimore on a daily and weekly basis. These billboards will allow us to do that and really get the message out about our stadium programming. But as I believe Mr. Boston mentioned, we've also talked to the Carroll Camden Business Association, Pig Town Main Street, and citizens of Pig Town about community use of the billboard so that they can get the word out about some of their significant events like Pig Town Festival. Also, we are in a day and age where operations and maintenance costs of the stadium are ever rising, and we see a secondary benefit to these billboards of allowing us to offset rising operations and maintenance costs, especially as those tend to rise and will rise as we activate the stadium more on a daily and weekly basis, especially in the off-season. Mr. Boston also mentioned our commitment to the community, and, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your remarks. We take that very seriously. The conversations with Pig Town, the conversations with Carroll Camden, while more formal over the past few weeks, we have engaged in another community events and activations in both of those communities over the past 10 years, including significant community, neighborhood, I guess, the library over at one of those schools rebuilt and renovated in 2015, and launching a financial fitness and literacy academy at one of those schools a few months ago, in addition to having students out to our training camp. So thank you very much for your consideration this morning. I'm also happy to answer any questions, but I appreciate the committee's time and consideration.
Thank you, and certainly appreciate the component of this, which is very similar to the downtown area of special signage control, where we ensure that there's a certain volume or level of community advertising to highlight what's going on in the community. Colleagues, any questions for Mr. Etheridge? Seeing that there are none, are there any other members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Seeing, is there a none? Is there a motion to move the bill? Motion by Stokes, is there a second? Second by Burnett? Costello is a yes. Middleton? Stokes? Schleifer? Burnett? Dorsey and McCray absent. This bill passes five zero with two absences, moves to second reader at the next full meeting of the City Council. Council Bill 24-0589, rezoning, 601 West West Street, Lot N, 616 West West Street, Lot NN, or double N, and 701 West Austin Street, also known as Lot O. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DHCD?
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD, we respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Excellent. Thank you. Planning Commission, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
No objection, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. BDC?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom Welly, BDC, we stand by our unfavorable report.
Thank you. Transportation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no objection.
Thank you. BMZA?
Stands behind their bill report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Parking Authority of Baltimore City?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority, we stand by our favorable bill report.
Excellent. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Seeing that there are none, and, Mr. Leva, if you could just make sure that the... Seeing that there are none, and, um, Mr. Leva, if you could just make sure that the record reflects that the testimony from Mr. Boston and Mr. Etheridge applies to this bill as well as the next bill, um, seeing that there are none, is there a motion to move the bill favorably? Motion by Stokes, second by Schleifer. Costello's a yes. Middleton? Stokes? Schleifer? Burnett? Dorsey McCray are absent. This bill passes 5-0 with two absen- uh, absences and moves to second reader at the next full meeting of the city council. Council Bill 24-0590, zoning sign regulations, C5 DC zoning district amendment. Law Department, approve for form and legal sufficiency.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Ms. Ruley, if you could, uh, I'll come back to you in one second. DHCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our bill, uh, favorable bill report.
Thank you. Fire Department? Mr. Schneller?
Stand behind that bill report.
Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Zachary Wellman, Office of Equity and Civil Rights. Initially, the OECDR made no recommendation on Council Bill 24-059 in its current state. That's just due to some of the impacts not being able to be foreseen of changing the area of special signage control regulation for all C5 DC zoning districts. Should the proposed amendments be adopted, I think we can confidently say we have no obje- no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. BDC?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tom Wiley from BDC. We stand by our unfavorable report.
Transportation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no objection.
BMZA?
Stand behind that bill report, Mr. Chair.
Parking Authority, Baltimore City?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority, we stand by our favorable bill report.
Planning Commission, Mr. Tizo?
Uh, Planning Commission unfortunately recommended disapproval, but they asked us to convey some of their rationale on this one.
Please.
And unfortunately, it has nothing to do with the applicant's particular, uh, proposal. Their concern, uh, was that this will create the possibility for creating new freestanding pole-mounted billboards in the C5 DC, basically the downtown core and slightly expanded area. They were trying to square that idea in their minds, um, and there was just not enough votes to support it. There is, um, a safety blanket here because it's only possibly approvable through an area of special sign control. So it will take legislation to create, it will take a master plan amendment, uh, to be approved by the Planning Commission, so there are some steps, but the commission was just nervous about the possibility for new pole-mounted, uh, billboards. They were fine with the ones on the buildings that had been, uh, approved in the recent year or so, um, but they just couldn't find another way, uh, to square that, and I'll verify with Caitlin that that is correct. Did I miss anything?
Yeah, and it's important to note that, um, this could potentially impact, uh, another area of special sign control, as you referenced, the North Harbor area of special sign control is downtown, and there are definitely parking lots within 2,000 feet of, uh, Camden Yards that could potentially, um, take advantage of this, but they would have to go through Planning Commission through the sign plan to review. They would not return to council.
Thank you. The only level of buyer's remorse that I have on the area of special sign control for downtown is what we called it. I hate the term North Harbor. And I, uh, certainly appreciate, deeply appreciate the Planning Commission's role, um, in this, and, uh, I think it removes some of the politics and allows for a, a truly objective analysis of the, the signage plan. So that, I, I think was very helpful, um, for, uh, North Harbor and, and will be for Port Covington, and, and this being the third area of special signage control. So thank you, Mr. Tizo. That's, that's very helpful. Colleagues, uh, before we go to questions, uh, Ms. Ruley, so if you just, uh, I, I know Mr. Boston talked about it, but I always enjoy hearing from Law Department. Could you just walk us through and kind of corroborate everything that, that Mr. Boston said about the proposed amendment?
Sure. The amendment would further restrict what can be done in areas of special signage control in the C5 DC district, and it would restrict the ability to use a freestanding pole, uh, in an area of special signage control to places that are within a certain distance of a 40,000-seat stadium. So, um, I, I hear the general concerns that people are afraid these freestanding poles will now pop up in C5 DC everywhere, but that's not true. Any area of special signage control across the city, the listed signs in the table are permitted only in an area of special signage control, but the permission is not what you would think of in the rest of the zoning code as of right. It's that you have those signs to play with when you go to formulate your signage plan that will then be approved by the Planning Commission. So just because freestanding pole would now be added to the list of permissible signs in a C5 DC area, which is what the original bill does, the amendment further restricts where they could be placed, and, um, you know, from a legal standpoint, we've looked at it, we're happy to approve it for form and legal sufficiency, but we will say this was kind of a question of tie goes to the runner. I mean, you're the legislature. If you really feel that that is necessary, um, for the public health, safety, and welfare, because again, that's what zoning is, um, that's fine, but we don't really see the concern here because it isn't a permission of right like a, you know, the difference between a permitted use and a conditional use. It still needs a sign plan, so the things people are concerned about in terms of aesthetics, proliferation, density, those things are generally designed for a sign plan. So we're not seeing as much of a benefit. We do see the potential that somebody could challenge this and say, you know, this is really almost a version of spot zoning, but we've talked about it internally in our office, and we've decided that that's not enough of a concern to prevent, you know, our approval of the bill with or without the amendment. So if that's something the council feels they want to do for, for public health, safety, welfare reasons, they can do it, but I don't believe that adding a new sign type to this, to any area of special signage control permits it of right. It just simply allows it to be a type of sign that you might put in your plan and seek to have approved. So hopefully that addresses your concerns.
Excellent. That was very helpful, and I certainly, uh, the council president and I both believe this, this amendment is absolutely necessary, and certainly agree with the infinite wisdom of the Law Department in your analysis, which I, I think you very clearly articulated for the committee. Colleagues, uh, any questions for our city agencies here? Seeing that there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Uh, Mr. Leva, again, if you could just note for the record that Mr. Boston, Mr. Etheridge's, did I say your last name correctly? Excellent. Uh, that their testimony during the first bill also applies, uh, to this bill. The, uh, amendment, uh, Ms. Ruley, I believe, is in the, uh, package? Is that? The amendment has been circulated at this time. I move the amendment. Is there a second? Second by Stokes? We'll do a voice vote on that. All those in favor of the amendment say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The amendment carries. Uh, is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended? Motion by Stokes, second. Second by Schleifer. Costello's a yes. Middleton? Stokes? Schleifer? Burnett? Dorsey McCray are absent. This bill passes 5-0 with two absences and moves to second reader at the next full meeting of the city council. Finally, Council Bill 24-0583, the 2024 comprehensive master plan for the city of Baltimore.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just want to note that I, uh, just shared the amendment to that with the committee.
Yep. Thank you. Or they, they, they had already circulated it as well, so. Yep, yep.
Amendment for this or the master plan?
We're starting the master plan now.
We have not received the master plan.
Unless you just sent them? Okay, then, all right, very good. Okay, um, Mr. Tizo, can you, you were here for the last round, you were here for the ru- last round of this. Okay. Can someone give me a, can you give me a 30-second summary of where we left things last time, or just refresh the, the committees?
Um, yeah, so the, the comprehensive plan is before you. This is, uh, a plan that's required by the state of Maryland as well as by the city charter. Um, we went through an extensive community process, and I think all of the bill reports, uh, that were received from the agencies were favorable, um, and we just needed the drafting of the language by legislative reference to reflect the amendments that Planning Commission proposed, and so you should now have those available to you. And just to refresh the amendments, our, our, um, two categories of amendments, um, so there's one set of amendments that are amending the goal statements, which are pulled, um, from the plan into, um, into the bill, um, and then the other one is, uh, referencing an updated version of the plan itself that was updated, um, October 11th, um, as opposed to the September date that was in the original bill.
Excellent. Okay, um, so we heard from all of our agencies at the, at the last hearing, and we gave, uh, members of the public an opportunity to testify. We will do that again today. But first, uh, the amendment package, um, either Mr. Schneller or Mr. Leva, so that, that is in our inboxes right now?
Yes.
Okay, and if someone could forward it to Mr. DeGraffin Wright? Who's the, the redundant city council's council? Spelled differently, so I hear. All right, um, let's see here.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Hi, um, I, um, missed the last hearing because I had a devastating fire in my district. I did listen to the hearing, and I wondered if there would be an opportunity for me to ask some questions.
Sure. Absolutely. Give me one second, let me get this amendment thing straightened out. Okay, this is the email from Tyler, right?
Yes.
At 10:34. Okay.
Mr. Chair, just for the councilwoman, we don't have all the agencies here because they were excused by the chair.
I did. Y- yes, that's.
Um, they are not going to be substantive relative to subject. They're going to be, um, very much directed to planning and to the Law Department.
Yep. I, great minds think alike. I specifically asked, uh, for Planning and Law to stick around for this. Okay, let me go back to the amendments. So I've got a document from you with six amendments? That covers both buckets of amendments?
Yes.
All right, uh, very briefly, explain to me the difference between the two buckets of amendments again?
Yeah, so the, the bill lists the goal statements that are included in the plan, and many of the goal statements were updated to specify the, the audience, um, of who is intended to benefit from the, from the different goals, um, and so those, uh, goal statements in the bill are updated, um, to match the revised plan. So that's one set, and that's a bunch of amendments to goals. Um, and then the second, uh, set of amendments is to, um, update the reference to the plan itself. So we updated, uh, the plan, uh, based on comments that were received, um, and so we're referencing a plan that's updated October 11th instead of September 11th.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, uh, councilwoman, I'm going to come back to you in one second. Mr. DeGraffin Wright, you have the six amendments in the package?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'm going to come back to you in a minute, once you've had a chance to, um, look at those. So councilwoman, uh, you're up with planning.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me the opportunity. I, um, I, I, I think I've found something that still needs to be amended, um, and I appreciate the Law Department, um, answering my question ahead of time. The bill says at the very end, um, that we would enact this resolution, um, but it's my understanding that this is an ordinance. Um, can you clarify what we're doing here?
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, a resolution is a type of ordinance, so it should be okay either way under the charter, but I will double-check the charter language based on, I saw Adam Levine's advice earlier this morning, and I will double-check it. There is a reference in the charter to the resolution process undertaken by the Planning Commission, and so that is, that is a separate thing.
Right.
Um, I believe this is sufficient the way it's written, but if it isn't, I will double-check and, and let you know.
Okay, thank you. I was just confused about the fact that usually when we have resolutions, there's an R next to the number, and they're also non-binding, and so I just wanted to be sure what we were doing.
Oh, sure, there's two types of resolutions. There's a city council resolution that would have the R and be non-binding, and, you know, I resolve to have a happy day. Um, the other ones are mayor and city council resolutions that do hold the force of law, and so they are a type of ordinance. So I will just double-check that we have the correct one here.
I know we do have the type of, uh, resolution for like a charter amendment, right? So, um.
And they're not the only ones. State law provides for certain things that must be done by a resolution of the legislative body, and so it's this, it's also things like.
Transit-oriented developments?
Transit-oriented developments, economic benefit district, that kind of thing.
No, I appreciate that.
Since it's, um, since it's something required by subtitle four of Article 1 of the Land Use Article of the Maryland Code, I will double-check to make sure that they aren't saying the word resolution there, but essentially, um, the legal effect should be the same either way. This is not the little R resolution with no legal effect, so it, it should be fine either way, but I will double-check that right now.
Sure. Um, I have a, a couple of questions for planning. What was the public input process on the land use map?
Yeah, so we, um, we initially started with a, um, a map that, um, showed, uh, sort of the existing land uses based on the best information that we had available, and asked people to comment on it, um, and we really didn't get a lot of feedback on that. People had, um, kind of a challenging time, uh, engaging with it. So, um, we, uh, developed a draft map and then took it out to people for people to respond to in terms of the proposed land use map, um, and we made that available online for people to comment on. Um, we went through, uh, we received hundreds of comments and went through and revised that, um, and made that available again online for people to comment on. So we went through multiple, uh, rounds of, you know, proposing a land use map, getting comments, revising it, proposing a land use map, getting comments, and revising it. Um, so we brought that out to communities as well as, um, having it available online for people to comment on.
So when you went out to communities, was it through the 20 CRTs, I guess, or what they called, or was it like, did you have a map in the, a, a land, like you were in an area and said, here's the proposed land use map, like a paper thing that people could actually look at?
Yeah, we had, um, paper maps, um, of the entire city when we went around and did, um, workshops in, in, uh, different areas of the city, and then based on where we were, we had kind of, uh, extra maps for that area so that people, you know, could zoom in and mark it up, um, because we knew we would get more participants from, from the, you know, from the immediate area. Um, but we had paper maps as well, um, yeah, at events across the city.
And so how many of those, uh, meetings or sessions did you have?
I don't remember off the top of my head, um.
Was it integrated ba- I guess the question is better asked this way. Was it integrated into the already set meetings that you had already planned, so people had to come to, uh, the planning meetings, you know, so, you know, you had four or five of them, some in East Baltimore, some in West Baltimore, et cetera. Were they impl-?
Yes.
Part of those meetings?
Uh-huh. Yes.
Mm-hmm. Um, yeah, I, well, I think the committee knows that the, uh, the, the testimony letters that, uh, have come in are basically from my district. So, um, I, you know, just have some, you know, questions about how that outreach actually happened, because there are people in my district saying that they never got a say. Um, and so I think that that's something that we need to just think about. Relative to the land use map, what does it mean? Does it mean that if, uh, we pass this land use map, okay, that, let's say there's a property in my district that's zoned residential, I'll just use my address, okay, my street, 31st Street, um, and we, uh, the land use map has it as potentially, you know, could eventually get to commercial just because we're so close to Green Man Avenue, um, what, what does that actually mean? Does it mean that if someone wants to, a business wants to expand onto 31st Street, that they could, um, you know, ask for commercial zoning at that ti- at that point, and you'd say, yep? Or if, let's say we wanted as residents to rezone it to R7 or whatever it is now, um, that we couldn't because it's, the land use map says it's C1? Like, how is that supposed to work?
Yeah, we've gotten several questions from folks on this, uh, because it is a big change. I've mentioned before, I've dedicated my career to dragging us to standard planning practice if it kills me. Uh, so we are supposed to have a land use plan to guide the growth and development of the city. We've never had that. So up until this point, the potential for rezoning has been unlimited, uh, much to our challenge. We've had, and I use the Haven Street corridor, a domino effect of eroding industrial, uh, important corridors with invasions of townhomes, and we kept losing that fight because we had literally nothing to point to to say this sector, this.
this sector, this industry is important, we need to preserve this. It was just one-off with nothing behind it. So the purpose of this plan is to shrink that possibility to better channelize what is supposed to happen in any given neighborhood. And clustering them by related zoning districts seemed to be the easiest way to get to that. So we're, in effect, reducing the world of possibility from 50 possible districts to pick from to the few that are compatible with the future trajectory. And then that will actually be looked at every four years to verify that it's correct. And if there's changes that need to be made, they can be incorporated at that time. But it's not this one-off that we're just looking down the cardboard tube at one individual rezoning. It's supposed to be a comprehensive look. So if the community wants a change, they get that put on their land use map, then that is what will guide future rezoning requests. It doesn't actually do any changes on its own. You still have to have a rezoning bill, but we will, for the first time, have something where we are weighing, should we do this or not? What does it mean to be compatible with the master plan? We will have that map to point to.
May I do some follow-up to that? Okay. So the, but, you know, in my example, let's say in the land use map, okay, that it's, you know, my block ends up being C1. And then our, you know, residents want to actually, you know, decide we're going to rezone to R7, okay? And so we work together on, you know, getting all that together. I introduce the ordinance and then planning says, oh no, the master plan says, this says C1. So you cannot do this? What's that interaction there?
Yeah. That's how comprehensive planning works. 100% correct.
So you would say, as the planning director and, you know, the planning director's sitting here, but as planning, as a staff report to the Planning Commission, you would say, no, we don't think that's a good idea to rezone that to R7 because in the land use map, it says C1.
That's how it works. And if there's a concern, the plan for the area needs to be changed first. If the idea for the neighborhood is not...
Now, as the council, we can do whatever we want. So I could still put in this thing and say, you all said a C1, we don't agree with it and...
I'm just going to, I'm just going to jump in there.
Yeah.
As the council, we cannot do whatever we want. We will make zoning changes as appropriate in conjunction with the law department provided that they are either a result of a change in character to the neighborhood or they're a result of a mistake in a previous rezoning.
That's a good point. Thank you.
As demonstrated by findings of fact. Before we continue, Ms. Rulie, can you please confirm that I stated that correctly for the record?
Yes. For single-property rezonings, you have to have either a mistake or change in the character of the neighborhood since the last comprehensive rezoning.
Right. That would also apply to a group of properties that were being rezoned.
No. That's a comprehensive rezoning and you don't, that is a legislative act that is not quasi-judicial, so you don't need those two.
Got it. Thank you.
So just to, I'm sorry to have interrupted you. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for that. So, again, just using my example, so we, I would still be able to put in the ordinance for an R7 on my block. And even though the master plan set, or the land use map says C1, we can still pass it. Nobody, I mean, because it's a comprehensive rezoning, it's the entire block, it's not a single thing, which you've seen that I've done in some instances in my district, actually, you know, rezone entire blocks to be able to accomplish a goal.
Yeah. Well, the comprehensive plan speaks for itself and we would not encourage you to violate that and do something completely different if I heard that question correctly. And if you were challenged, that would possibly give a good foothold to have it overturned, I suspect. So the whole idea is not to just look at one-off properties with no relation to anything else as the wind may take you, okay? The idea is we're supposed to be doing this in a comprehensive way. So we would encourage that four-year process. If a change is coming, work that through the neighborhoods, get the land use plan updated if their will or needs have shifted and then the follow-up rezoning would be in conformance with the plan. But we can advise that you, in a sense, go against that and pick something else that's not compatible.
So then, is the only chance to amend the land use plan that every four-year review? Like, am I able to put in an amendment right now to the land use plan in this?
Well, it hasn't been adopted yet. So this is a policy decision. Yeah. You could make an amendment. That's what...
Well, but it's not in the bill. I mean, the bill doesn't have the land use plan. It has it attached, but it's not, I mean, what I'm saying is I'm trying to compare it to the comprehensive rezoning that happened in 2016 when we literally could, I wasn't on the council then, but obviously was paying a little bit of attention, that there were map amendments, there were, you know, different things like that. Are we able to do that during this process or? Not that, I'm just, I'm just curious. I don't know what I'm going to do here. I don't have, I'm just curious.
If, Chris Rodd, Director of Planning, councilwoman, this is a pretty comprehensive reform that we're proposing here in the comprehensive plan. So first of all, it sets up a four-year cycle for amending a land use plan, which would then allow you to, to change the zoning without proving the change or mistake rule. That's what it does. However, it also sets up other cycle, rezoning cycles. So for example, we are proposing, this is just a proposal at this time in the comp plan, that we roll any and all rezoning amendments together into a, say, a four-month cycle, something like that, and consider them as a group every year rather than random one property or one-off rezoning bills. So that introduces an element of comprehensiveness because then you're looking at the rezoning bills relatively speaking. And we think also, we're not really holding anything up because it takes six months to do a council rezoning anyway. And then finally, as long as you can prove change or mistake, you can introduce a zoning bill, an individual zoning bill at any point in the process. So we have three different types of modifications to the zoning process to introduce more predictability and more transparency into the process.
Thank you. That was actually, my next question was about the, that proposal that, for the comprehensive zoning every year and then how that would all, the individual rezonings would work. I believe that's only been discussed slightly with Economic and Community Development Committee. This did not come up in the hearing the other day. So I don't know if that's something that the committee is worried about because, you know, we actually haven't had, as far as I understand, and I'm on ECD, a comprehensive discussion with the council about how, I mean, what you're thinking about relative to rezoning and comprehensive zoning. I mean, I think I'm fine with the schedule, I don't know yet. But to make sure that we all actually know what you're asking us to vote on today, which is that proposal for changing how we do rezoning when we've been redoing rezoning in a certain way, you know, the entire, and I'm not opposed to it. I'm just saying that I don't know that we've had a discussion in chambers with everyone. We did slightly for ECD, but not necessarily this committee, about, you know, what the changes to the zoning, rezoning process that you are proposing. So just if you could make sure that that's, can you restate it, please, so that the committee understands? And then I'll have one more question.
Sure. I think we briefed this at a council lunch that feels like forever ago. But the general idea is it would be akin to what we did for the comprehensive rezoning of the city. So there would be a window opened for accepting applications for rezoning. We would generate that list. And we get 15, maybe as many as 20 requests for rezoning in a year. So it's not as much as some of our surrounding jurisdictions, perhaps. That list would be circulated amongst the council. If you have any concerns about that, if you think that it needs to be separated for an individual rezoning bill, that is always an option at that point in time. Once that list is gotten through that initial vetting, it would be advertised, we'd take public input and if it's approved, then the change goes into places, one big rezoning. Again, parallel to that, there is still always the opportunity for an individual property rezoning if somebody just can't wait. Or if it is something that is possibly going to require more discussion, if it's controversial and you don't want it to hold up the comprehensive process, they can go through a separate bill if that's necessary. So that would be the process in a nutshell. There's plenty of opportunity, of course, for your engagement with your communities. I remember, in fact, I think you were at that lunch and specified very clearly that you want the opportunity to work through your communities and that's right and proper, that's your job. That will always be there, but in the end, it's a rezoning bill that has to get approved through council like any other.
Thank you. I have two more questions. One is not related to this. I noticed in the plan that there was no reference to language access. There's hardly any reference to our immigrant communities at all. And yet that is where the growth is happening in our city, is our immigrant communities. And you would think that in order to grow our city and people feel comfortable being here, that there would be, you know, a mention.
I think he understands the issue. Can you address it? The language access comment that councilwoman made?
Language access. So, councilwoman, you know my history with Southeast CDC. We have taken a very aggressive approach as a department to land use access. It's my judgment that within our agency's workload, that the best way to do that, the most effective way to do that, is to translate development-related material. More specifically, I think, around the permitting process than the comprehensive planning process. We've been focused on making our documents available to the contracting class that are not native English-speaking and other small developers that are not native English-speaking.
My question, I'm sorry, Director, is about the fact that this document documents where we're headed in the next 10 years as a city. There's hardly any mention of the growth of the population. There's some, being our immigrant community, our Latino community. And as a result, don't you think we should have more statement of, when we're talking about growth and retention, that making people feel welcome in our city by making sure that all, that, you know, we passed the language access bill that was introduced, that we make sure that all agencies, like just putting that statement in there. And I, if I missed it, I apologize. But I think that as we talked about growth and retention in the plan, it was very much, and I agree with what you have in the plan in terms of making sure that we're addressing vacant properties, growth in the areas that have been ignored for so long. I absolutely agree and I'm so glad to see that. But I didn't, what I didn't see is welcoming, you know, residents that, you know, may speak other languages and that they are integrated into the work that we as a city do.
I think among the revisions to the goal statements, I mentioned that they're talking about the target audience more explicitly. And so many of them, I'm just, you know, doing a word search for immigrant and I'm seeing in goal statement after goal statement that it's mentioning in the revised version that they're targeted to immigrants, including other populations. So hopefully that responds in something that we caught in our revisions.
Was it in the revised plan that was in the...
The October 11th version as opposed to the September 11th version.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I saw immigrant. I didn't see Latino very much at all. So I just want to make sure that that is something that as a city, we're making sure, and it is true, we're working together on the language access bill. And then I have a bunch of others, but I'm just going to limit it to this last one. And maybe this goes to housing, but I think it does speak to the, to the plan. What, the state did a comprehensive housing analysis four years ago, five years ago now almost, that really talked about the housing need in our state, the number of units needed per income level. And that is not referenced here. I'm sure it's going to be referenced in the comprehensive housing plan, mostly because I sent them the link and I'm hopeful that that's going to be done. But there was another study that was cited in the plan, which hasn't even been done yet, and that's from the Greater Baltimore something or other, Metropolitan Council. And so I get that we need, you know, regional growth, but frankly, we need all of those housing units and we do have the capacity to bring all of the needs of the state's housing units to our city. And I think a bolder statement of that regard is really needed in here, but also that we should reference more of those studies that have been done in terms of proving our, you know, of our point.
Yeah. I think we would all admit that this housing issue was very confused during this comprehensive planning process. We were trying to align the HCD's housing plan with the comp plan and we were never able to do that. As you know, it's underway now. I think our third meeting was last night. But we essentially punted on that so to allow the department to finish its housing plan. You're right, we could have referenced some of these pieces in the past, but we really couldn't get our hands around a housing policy in this comp plan because of the departments, because they were lagging behind this planning process. This planning process was controlled by an ordinance.
Well, and you do reference the comprehensive housing plan and I know from my briefing that, you know, you've done, you've shared information with them. So there is some interchange, which I think is good.
Yeah. And we have a reference to the 2025 Baltimore Regional Fair Housing Analysis that Baltimore Metropolitan Council is doing. I reached out to them, but they didn't have, because they're still in progress, you know, they didn't have like data for us to insert at the time, but we do have a reference and provide a link to the work that they're doing.
Maybe I'm a little partial because as the Director of CDN, I worked really hard to get that assessment done at the state level and I know that they're going to do it every 10 years. And it is a, it is a roadmap, really, for what we should be doing in the region, but also in the state. So to not see it here is, I think, problematic and I'm hopeful that it'll be, I know it'll be in the state's plan. And I would just add the indicator on VBNs, I think is important. We do want to have lower VBNs. But frankly, we are undercounting VBNs right now and I think that we, as a city, need to think about an additional indicator relative to vacancies in terms of number of houses rehabbed as opposed to just going down on the VBNs. Because there's actually so many properties that don't have VBNs that should have VBNs or they're going to go quickly to have VBNs very soon. And I don't want to have DHCD hesitate to, you know, put a VBN on a house just because we want to see that number down. So it's just an indicators issue that, as you know, I've been working on. So, Mr. Chair, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask my questions and thank you.
You're quite welcome. Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one request in reference to community outreach. So this goes to second reader on November 4th and I know you understand why community outreach is so important to the council and within our districts. Is there some way you can give us like a chart, a timeline chart of your community outreach, where, the dates and so on as a matter of record in the file for this? And something that we could refer to when we get those questions from within our communities?
We can put that together. We have a high-level discussion of the planning process in the plan, but we can put together something more detailed. It sounds like what you're looking for with dates and places and that type of thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, colleagues. Any other questions for city agencies? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Rulie.
I just wanted to follow up with the councilwoman's question about amending the bill, whether it should be an ordinance or a resolution. It is titled as an ordinance. It looks on the top like an ordinance and so it is my fault I didn't catch that in the last three paragraphs of the bill, it says, shall be resolved. So there's an inconsistency there. Legislative reference should, it's a technical amendment, but the language should be changed so that it makes it clear that the last page of the bill mirrors the first page of the bill. And that is something I didn't catch, but it should be all titled as an ordinance. So I'm happy to work with legislative reference to prepare the correct language. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be hard. It's just changing the wording. I'm not exactly sure why the last page of the bill makes it seem like a resolution, which, again, I hadn't caught before.
No problem. That is, thank you. No problem, that is, thank you to both of you for catching that, and if you would kindly take the lead with legislative reference, I think the committee would be comfortable with dealing with that matter on second reader, considering it's a technical amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We will take public testimony on this matter, and then we will consider amendments in the bill. Are there any members of the public who wish to testify? Ms. Floyd. We will do two-minute limit on public testimony. Mr. Leva, if you could please bring up the clock.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Two minutes, two minutes for testimony, and if you could turn your microphone on on the bottom right.
Is that it? Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I just gave staff the copy, written copy of what was my verbal testimony at the last hearing, so, really, and I do appreciate the questions that have been asked today. You know, the, the bill says this is for review and amendment, and you've only had this since mid-September. And there has been, in today, we've had more of the slow drip of information that we've been getting, starting with the Planning Commission hearings. We keep getting more, a little bit, bit by bit by bit, we get a little more information about what this all means, and good questions were asked today, but we're still not there yet. And I think that, you know, planning's desire to have you enact this land use map without amendment is very, very troubling. It should be amendable, and without any notice to property owners, you're going to enact something that can't be amended, I think that's, well, that's very troubling. I, I think the mistakes that, that get made when people are in a hurry can be very difficult to undo. I do think that it's possible that this aspect of this bill that says you can't, that the next council can't do anything until a year, I think that might, and the Law Department can weigh in on that, that might be illegal, because I'm not sure you could actually tie the hands of the next council in that way, but it would be nice to understand that, so that perhaps the next council could come in. If you did something now, perhaps the next council could come in and amend the land use map. I think we need some, some clarity on that. I would prefer that this whole thing get put off until the new council. I think that was the best solution of all here. I just wanna say, you know, I'm someone who reads the fine print, and I brought my concerns, which I, I put in writing this time, and I haven't had, the concerns have not been addressed, so I haven't heard the answers today. But you have to follow the breadcrumbs here. There are a lot of breadcrumbs to follow, and it's getting, you know, we're getting there to an understanding of what this means, but the people out there don't know what the land use means, the land use map, just, just don't know. And they don't have notice. That's, that's the way it is, it's, you know, I'm here basically saying the same things I was saying last time. We need amendments to the map if you're gonna enact a map.
Thank you. Ms. Shyle.
Seltzer.
Yep, two minutes.
I'm the one that actually brought in the clip, and the other ones were not brought in, and I asked for--
So that's--
To testify about other--
So hang on.
Other issues.
So, at the end of each hearing, before we have voted, I have asked, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter?
But you didn't take the clipboards.
It's not relevant. I've said at the end of every single hearing, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter?
Let's go back to question E, of how there were roomful of people, and you cut it off.
Cut what off?
Question E regarding the conduit and--
We didn't discuss that matter today. That's not--
I understand that, I'm just sharing the inconsistency of taking public testimony.
Which, wha, hold on, which, wait, hold on, hold on. What inconsistency?
There's an inconsistency of taking public testimony when it says hearing, and I'm sick of it, of being told, oh, it was a mistake.
There was, there was--
I don't know your name, but you're aware of this issue.
No.
Of having signup sheets, and then being told, oh, it's a mistake.
We have people sign the signup sheets who do not wish to testify, we have people who don't sign up, sign up, who do in fact wish to testify, and I have probably chaired 13 or 1400 hearings in these chambers. Never once have I not taken public testimony, never once.
I had to call it out.
Not, not, you've never--
And then the camera was shut off for regarding question E.
So the, the city council doesn't control the camera, that's controlled by Charm TV. Charm TV is an agency within, it's actually the Mayor's Office of Cable and Communications, that is an agency within the executive branch, those folks work for the mayor, not for the city council. If you come into these chambers in a hearing that I am chairing, you will be given an opportunity to testify. That opportunity to testify has never once been denied to an individual who has come in chambers during a hearing that I am chairing, period.
I, I can show you, there's evidence.
You can show me all, all, you're welcome to show me all you like, that, that is a factually accurate statement which I just made. So, we're gonna focus on the matter at hand today, which is the comprehensive plan. We look forward to hearing your testimony, you will be given two minutes, starting now.
Okay. I don't know where this public comment is, but it's, it's seriously not available to public comments, so I'd like to know where the quote "public comment" about this was. This, do you have the document here? It's like 400 pages. Okay, so I'm gonna specifically talk about, I'm firmly against this, I think it's wonderful that there was some kind of public comment. This is a list of ideas and goals, and not plans. Plan is going from Plan A, from place A to place B, and how you're gonna get there. Nothing. You focus on GPS and have somebody else tell you how to go somewhere, and that's the, the society that we have now. So I'm gonna talk about trees. So it is not, it's a, a human thing to plant trees, it's not a nature thing for humans to plant trees, but we have so destroyed this world that we have to plant trees. Now, saying we're planting trees doesn't tell you what kind of trees, you plant the wrong trees, the wrong type of growth, is just saying, I just need some produce. Well, what kind of produce? Do you want, do you want fruit or vegetable? Just get me some produce. Just get me some produce. That is what your quote "plan" says regarding trees. And there is absolutely nothing about climate change, climate crisis. I just finished the climate reality project with, with Vice President Al Gore, and so I have access to all these experts besides the experts that I've been reading scholarly articles about 90, at least 90 a week, and that's not including the general articles. So you have no plan, this needs to be a living document, this, and not addressing, not making Baltimore have the priority of becoming a sponge city, which Professor Yu has at least a 500-city waitlist, is beyond neglectful, it is harmful, and, and the real estate companies are making sure that everybody knows, this is a flood zone, this has high winds, this is a drought area, and et cetera, and you can't stop this. You are the climate deniers, you're science deniers, you can't build all these things, you can't put--
Okay ma'am, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up--
Your, your, your friend David Bramble putting high rises at the edge of the water. You, this--
Ma'am.
Baltimore is not, the buildings are already sinking, but it's also collapsing, the whole East Coast is collapsing. Pinos.
Ma'am, you're out of order, your, your time is concluded.
January 2024.
I wanna thank you for joining us today and sharing your testimony, thank you.
This cannot be, and this, this will be sued by climate--
Ma'am, ma'am--
By, by--
Your testimony has concluded.
The environmental people.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Seeing that there are none, there is a package of amendments, I believe the administration has drafted those amendments, is that correct? And, were the council president's offices introducing those amendments on behalf of the administration, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, excellent. Colleagues, are there any questions on the amendments that have been offered up? Seeing that there are none, is there a motion to move the amendments? Motion by Stokes, is there a second? Second by Middleton. We'll do a voice vote on the amendments. All those in favor of adopting the amendments, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. That motion carries unanimously, the amendments are now adopted. Ms. Ruley, we do have one other amendment that the council will be considering on second reader, which is the technical amendment, which you have graciously offered to take the lead with Department of Legislative Reference, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I've emailed them.
Excellent, thank you very much. Colleagues, any other questions before we entertain a motion to Councilwoman Ramos?
Mr. Chair, the, it's my understanding that the law, notwithstanding the one that we're gonna do on second reader, there was another amendment that the Law Department had, was that already included in the package?
Ms. Ruley.
Let me double-check that.
It also was a technical amendment on a citation, I believe.
I believe they did that at the last hearing. The first hearing on this bill, I believe, you took up the technical amendment.
Oh, that's right, that is totally my fault, thank you. Sorry about that.
Appreciate your diligence on that. Okay. Colleagues, any other questions?
And then, Mr. Chair also included for second reader is the timeline chart for, of community outreach.
We're gonna, yes, so what we're gonna ask for is that artifact that the Vice President requested, that that be submitted to the council prior to second reader, before we will move the bill on, on second reader. Okay, great, we're all in agreement on that, thank you, Madam Vice President. Okay. So, we have a bill which was amended two weeks ago, which has been subsequently amended today. Is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended?
So, so move.
Motion by Middleton, second by Stokes. Castello's a yes, Middleton?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Burnett?
Yes.
Okay. This bill passes with four yays, three absences, Dorsey, Burnett, and, or Dorsey, McCray, and Schleifer. This bill moves to second reader at the next poll meeting of the city council. We are now in recess, thank you.